Check your mic. Check your mic.
Are we live? All right. We're ready?
Check your mic.
Yeah, Andrew's going. Can't tell. I'm losing him. He doesn't know what got dropped.
We're good.
He's in attending. He's in the Zoom. Are we not ready? They're getting in this, they're having trouble with the Zoom. I can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, so I call this order, the Committee of the Whole School Board Meeting Tuesday, August 17th, to order, Ms. Robel, can we get a roll call, please?
Present.
Can't hear you.
No, they're already on. Is it supposed to light up, Dr. Bedden? No, it stays on. No, I'm here.
Mrs. Crawson.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Here.
Mr. Goddickson. Mr. Goddickson?
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Panofsky. Mr. Martin.
Present.
We have seven in the room, one removed. Totally.
Okay, can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for announcements, we had an executive session at six o'clock for personnel reasons. Oh, for executive, we had an executive session for personnel reasons at six o'clock before this meeting. Presentations, we're gonna go to Dr. Bedden.
Go ahead and display. So tonight, we are updating our approved, that was approved over the summer, the ARP-ESR Health and Safety Plan for the beginning of the 2021, 2022 school year. Over the summer, we were one of the first districts to update our plan prior to the required July 30th date. One of the regulations requires us to update when there are significant changes and also to review at least every six months. As we begin, I ask everyone to please consider the difficulties that you're going through. It's Dr. Bedden, right here, I don't know who said that.
Gentleman back there.
If I stand, I'm gonna lose the mic, so everyone couldn't hear me, that's why I was trying to be close to the mic.
They're just, yeah, they're just. Yeah, just continue. Just continue.
The period for the public education has been one of the most challenging, and I just ask that we all are free to disagree just that we try to do it respectfully as we go through this process. At 3:00 PM today, there was an emergency called a meeting by commissioners and the Bucks County Health Department. During that meeting, the Bucks County Health Department this afternoon revised the county's school guidance to include a recommendation for a meeting of all, masking of all students during this period of time. They did indicate that those masking directives will be reviewed at a later date. This is as a result of the requests also from the pediatric specialty hospitals as they are operating at close to capacity. And at this current time, as of the day too, we were notified that as a county, we move to the high level of community transmission. Prior to that, we were at the substantial phase. This particular slide provides information currently regarding our vaccination status. This presentation is available online also for those who may want to see it closer. This is our current status also that we provided for those who are interested in seeing what the current status as of today is in Bucks County. We are required to provide a plan, as an LEA, LAAs refer to the school district, as part of the Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, which is ESR. The school districts, in order to apply for or receive their ESR funds, must submit a health and safety plan that meets the ARP Act requirements. We are also required to do, what we're doing today is to provide an update to the board to make some changes to the plan based on any significant changes that are provided to us. This is just to understand what's happening now about COVID-19. The most prevalent variant right now is the Delta variant, and as of now, it has become the dominant strand in the U.S. due to community spread, and it is also having more cases that are impacting young people than the previous COVID-19. The required components of the plan are listed above, and we're going to touch on the key points of that that are included in our plan. CSD last year developed an instructional model transition plan that we could shift to and pivot easily based on the conditions that we are under. At this time, we are still planning to open with option one, which is a five-person in-person model on the first day of school. CSD is a one-to-one district with all students having access to a digital device. Prior to this past year, we did not have one-to-one completely at K to three. All of those students do have access to a device also, so completely through K-12, we have access. K, the three students are, will be getting new devices this current year also to replace their current devices. The plan also addresses improvements that we've made to our social, emotional, mental health efforts. We are adding a multitude of staff. We brought on a social, emotional, and academic learning coordinator. We have also added additional mental health counselors, and we also have expanded our student assistance program and a number of counselors as part of that. The district is also developing a wellness resource site that will provide information and resources to address social, emotional, and mental health challenges. Additionally, we are providing support, additional support staff in our student services. We're enhancing our social and emotional wellness across our learning environments and incorporating that into our academic program. We're increasing the professional development for our staff that are focused on supports to our students and staff around mental health. And we are also continuing to push our employee assistance program for our staff that may be having difficulty at this time. Sports and other extracurricular activities. The district is no longer required to have a separate athletic health and safety plan. We will be following the guidelines based on the key areas listed in red to guide the decision-making for how we will operate with our sports and extracurricular activities. Things that will be considered are the setting of the sporting events and activity, the physical closeness between the students, the number of people involved, the level and intensity of the activity, the duration in time, and the presence of people more likely to develop severe illness are factors that will be considered. Recession physical education, generally when outside, you are not required to wear a mask. It is highly recommended when you hit substantial and high transmission levels. We also built in consideration for safety and health issues that will allow us to allow principals and schools to have discretion when needing to remove the mask when outside because of heat issues, for example. Additionally, as they look at the physical distancing, that will be a part of the consideration with regards to masking or not masking outside, but generally you do not, and we will not have masking unless we hit a critical state like we are in a high, but if it creates a health and safety risk, the buildings have been authorized to make adjustments in that area. CDC talked about guidance for outside based on small and large crowd. For, they did not give a definition, it is up to the local entity to determine that. For CSD's purposes, a small group is equivalent to a class. A large group is more than one class that is outside or interacting. Food service will continue to provide services that comply with the guidelines for the federal food nutrition program, and we will continue our efforts no matter what phase we are in or no matter what instructional option that we are in. We are very happy that we are able to, with the number of people who have chosen virtual, to still provide food nutrition services to those students also during this time who are not in person. As in the past, and last year, we have continued to develop a plan based on metrics rather than individual personal opinion. These guidelines were taken from the CDC guidance. It is our intent to make sure that we have an understanding of that our goal is not to be in masking in perpetuity. Masking for Central, Centennial School District is based upon the conditions that we're facing tied to the PCR rate or the level of community transmission. We've considered this to be ideal, that we're forwardly communicating so people can understand what happens at what state. It is supposed to be data-driven and flexible and based upon the data. Universal masking is intended to guide our decision about masking. There are guidelines for indoor and guidelines for outdoor that is listed there. The important thing to remember that anytime you have the two indicators, the PCR rate and/or the level of community transmission, in case, in incident cases per 100,000, the higher number is what will determine the guidance for the decision. We also want to recognize that as we have increased in percentage of staff, students, and the community vaccinated, health officials advise that those are things that you can take into consideration to modify or deviate your masking requirements. Metrics for our masking for indoors are based on the low, moderate, and substantial level and high level. Specifically, in the current state we are, we've just been declared in a county as a high-level status. Also, the Bucks County, CDC, PA Department of Health, and the Pennsylvania Department of Ed have all recommended that school districts require all people regardless of vaccination status to be masked. In essence, we continue to have increased numbers of cases developed in the community which trigger the rating of the high status. The same situation exists with regards to our substantial level. Obviously, our plan says that as we transition from less to a lower level of community level transmission, our goal is to obviously not have to have and wear masks in our facilities based on the level of community transmission. Masking outdoor guidance is also based on the metrics. Again, if masking is recommended and not required, we are focusing on physical distancing. Three feet, if necessary, in a substantial areas, and then of course, greater distancing when you're in a high level of community transmission. As we talk about physical distancing in our classrooms, all of our classrooms are being set up so that we have three feet physical distancing between our desks. We are using layered and targeted mitigation efforts. We are reducing unnecessary furnishings in the classroom to allow for that space. As necessary, we make facility modifications to accommodate the safe and healthy well-being of our students and staff. And of course, as mentioned earlier, we are prepared to shift an instructional model based on the level of incidents, outbreaks, or guidance given to us by health officials. Nothing's really changed with our hand washing and respiratory etiquette. Most of that is a continuation of the efforts that we have put in place last year. This is still again another part of our layered mitigation strategy, so I won't go through all of those. These are all posted, this presentation available on the website. We will reinforce and work with our students and staff to make them aware and remind them of the efforts with hand washing. Cleaning and ventilation, the good news is that many of our facilities are in pretty good conditions. We will continue to follow proper cleaning and sanitizing protocols based on CDC guidance and EPA guidelines. Our high-touch surfaces will be disinfected based on an established schedule, so the facilities team has established a schedule to go and clean our high-touch areas on a regular basis. Buses and vans will be disinfected on a regular scheduled basis also. On a scheduled, developed by the facilities department, we will also continue to do electrostatic sprayer cleaning within our classrooms also. Our ventilation efforts will be targeted to follow the CDC recommended recommendations as well as we will maximize fresh air access where possible based on the weather. I mean, the windows, fresh air to ventilate, to let in. Contact tracing, change that has been made. The Buck County Health Department will not be conducting contact tracing for schools at this time. They're focusing their efforts and limited resources on the highest-risk settings, which are the congregant care facilities, correction facilities, and nursing homes. We are recommended in following the Bucks County Health Department efforts to urge parents to report their students' confirmed cases. Once we are aware of a confirmed case, we will communicate that confirmed case to the entire class or group activity, to those parents engaged, so they can make informed decisions about their children. To the extent possible, we will follow the guidelines for isolation and quarantine as appropriate. Quarantine is something that has to be driven by health department recommendation. We will require symptomatic students and staff, based on a recommendation from our Burks County Health Department, to test positive, to be excluded from school until symptoms have resolved, and they're fever-free for 24 hours. These are guidelines that will be enforced by our nurses. We have nurses in every school. We have a cadre of CNA and registered nurses totaling about 13 on our staff. We also may require a positive individual to wear a face mask or covering upon return to school through the seventh day from symptom onset if applicable to that situation. And that last one is driven with our efforts to try to still get kids back in school as soon as possible, but still provide a safe measure to do so. Diagnostic and screening testing, we will try to implement to the best of our ability the Table One recommendations from the Center, the Center for Disease Control. We also will be continuing to conduct targeted weekly assurance reporting by our staff. And then we're also, as part of this, tonight's agenda, if approved by the board, will also do targeted weekly assurance testing for our unvaccinated employees as part of our weekly testing process. We will also continue to require all visitors to participate in symptom screening procedure upon entering our buildings through our Raptor system. Students, teachers, and staff who have symptoms of infectious illness will be recommended to stay home and encouraged to see their healthcare provider. It is important to note that we will use the CDC guidance and also those areas from the Bucks County Health Department where determined applicable to address students who become sick and to report new cases while at school. So if a case is detected at school, we will report it to the Buck County Health Department to be entered into the database. Regarding vaccination, we will continue to partner with our federal, state, and local agencies to try to make vaccination available at no cost to our students. Our next vaccination clinic opportunity for our students is August 23rd from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It is still available if you are interested in signing up. You can do so until this Thursday. Feel free to sign up, it is at no cost. CSD will continue ongoing coordination with our health department, local pharmacists, and local physicians to make vaccination opportunities available for those who choose to do so, it is a voluntary choice. The Bucks County Health Department has submitted to us that they unequivocally recommend that everyone eligible get vaccinated. CSD supports that recommendation and encourage everyone to get vaccinated who is eligible and able to do so. It is also important to note that the Bucks County Health Department has recommended that school districts consider mandating vaccination for school staff. It is supported by the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers. There are provisions based on what the law has been provided for exceptions and accommodations regarding a masking. We do have designated forms for those who need to have accommodations based on the guidance given to us by the CDC and accommodations. We also, if students who are receiving services, there are Student Services Department, they have processes and procedures who are operating upon the IEP plan to have the team convene and review those, the needs of those studentses. Tonight also is a resolution for protecting our employees and others. This recommendation comes from CDC, our local health department, our Department of Health in the state, our Department of Education, and also OSHA, it's tied to that. Again, it's an effort for targeted layered mitigation strategy to support our staff for in-person instruction, to make sure that we have our staff safe and healthy so they can actually be present and available to teach our students. The procedure has been discussed and reviewed by our legal counsel, and it's been reviewed by not only our solicitor, but also the two other firms that have represented the district at various times throughout this process. It has been discussed with CEA leadership. It also has been gotten feedback on where the state association is on this model. It will require mandatory survey of our faculty and staff. This is health record information, so it will not be public. We can report out in aggregate terms, but not in individual terms. The information is going to be protected. The vaccination status will determine masking and require weekly testing for unvaccinated faculty and staff. And again, the Buck County Health Department actually recommends mandating vaccination, but we're not going to that point at this time. Legal counsel advice has come from three firms, again, that have represented the district either currently, either specialized services and/or in the past. Their overall guidance has been to follow the CDC and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania guidance. It is important to note that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania has said to school districts to follow the CDC guidance based on the Department of Health directive and also the Department of Education. That's where the directive comes from. They have both said they will not be giving separate guidance from the Center for Disease Control. CDC sent out a mask on bus mandate. A review and for legal opinion on that, that the mandate is legal based on that code. And all federal orders are presumed to be valid until determined otherwise. So masking is required on school buses. The CDC recommendation on masking in school buildings, the guidance is not a mandate. However, legal review said that American Rescue Plan, that the funds are conditional on adoption of a health and safety plan that to the greatest extent possible is consistent with CDC guidance. The PA Department of Health and the Department of Education also directed us to follow the CDC guidance to the extent possible. Universal masking in school is now the CDC guideline, and a decision not to follow has been determined to possibly risk the district eligibility for the ESAR funds. It is not just about the money. That money is used to actually serve our students. It supports our mitigation strategies. It supports our mitigation strategies, which is how we've been able to provide additional support and staff for our students. It also has helped us with our summer program to address unfinished learning. It has also supported our social, emotional, academic, and learning efforts. It has also provided funds to support our health services without the use of local funds because we have a number of people who don't have children in the school district. And this is a way that we can provide those services to our students and not pass that cost on to every taxpayer. At this time, is for the Board of School Directors. If you have any questions, or you can wait until that agenda item for deliberation.
Madam President, if I might, at this time, I have a comment and a question.
Absolutely, Mr. Martin.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It's a very important issue, and it's nice to see so many people interested in what's happening with the school district, whatever your opinion happens to be. I'm happy to listen to it. Dr. Ben referenced an item that was put out by the Bucks County Health Department and Dr. Damsker as recently as Sunday, which was two days ago. That statement that he put out, among other things, said that Bucks County cases of COVID have increased modestly, well below what they were. And as far as the entirety of the school population in Bucks County, they're averaging nine cases a day. And that serious illness of children is very rare. That's from Dr. Damsker. That's not from Mr. Martin. He also, in that memo, indicated there are other issues, such as the children learning less, mental health issues, and social adjustment that takes place. It went on to say in that document, and this is something that I believe, the CDC and the NIH have put out regulations that have changed with the wind. They also have put them out for the entirety of their constituency, which is the United States of America. They have not put them out for Southampton, Ivy Lane, and Warminster. Now, now. They also recommended, and hopefully that we can incorporate into our health and safety plan, which is important. And Dr. Ben and the staff have put a lot of work into this, and I certainly appreciate that. But there's something called TTM. And I hate acronyms because I don't understand a lot of them. But TTM stands for Targeted Temporary Mitigation. And what that means is that the data that we will enact as the Board of, the School Board of this district, is the information that pertains to those three municipalities. I could care less what's happening in Atlanta, New York, Los Angeles, and Miami. I want to know what's happening in our three communities. And the Bucks County Board of Health has agreed to provide that specific information to our school district so that we can take the best action on our information, not the CDC and not the NIH. That's also, the TTM is recognized as a gold standard by Departments of Health. In essence, it's to take the least restrictive action for the shortest period of time. And I would absolutely recommend that somewhere in our health and safety plan, we incorporate the tenants of TTM that will be our guiding factor as we move through this difficult situation and act on what's best for our school district, not what's best for the CDC and the NIH. That's my comment and question. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Mrs. Crossen, can you hear me?
So if anyone reads the document in its entirety, you will see the reference to the TTM that we will be incorporating. Once it's finished and made available, it is not available right now. What we're doing right now, and by the way, the update from Dr. Damsker, is to mask all students and follow the CDC guidelines, okay?
That came from the hospitals, not the Bucks County Health Department.
The communication specifically says "in schools" is the recommendation. But my point is, the document does reference TTM as Targeted Mitigation Strategy. That FAQ was actually put out at the request of superintendents in writing. So that was us working directly with them to get that information out and implementation and support for TTM.
Did any other board members have any comments to make?
Can you hear me, Mrs. Crossen?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Panofsky has joined the meeting.
That's what all I wanted to let you know. I was having audio problems before, but I am here.
Any other board members have any other comments?
Hello?
Over here.
Oh, Mrs. Brancato.
So I have a couple of questions. When you mentioned children who want to get vaccinated, we're going to make that available. They have to have parental permission, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I saw some parents going, uh-uh. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear. The other thing I wanted to ask is, how are the children being seated on the bus? Are they, sorry, Mr. Whartonby. Are they sitting right next to each other, like normal? Or are they being spaced out? I'm just asking so that the parents know.
Hello? Transportation will remain the same as it was last semester. So the front seat behind the driver is going to be vacant. And at the elementary level, as best as practicable, we're going to see two kids per seat. Obviously, that is contingent on how many kids do ride the bus coming next week.
Okay. So the other question I had was, the CDC says that children have to be masked on public transportation. Are school buses actually public transportation?
The CDC released, when we questioned that, a specific ruling that it directly applies to school buses also. So that was a challenging question. They sent communication indicating the mandate was specific also to school buses.
Okay, okay. All right, wait. So let me just get the solicitor to answer that.
I was not intending to, I wasn't intending to answer the question.
Oh, okay.
I was like, I mean, Dr. Ben was answering the question.
Okay.
We have an opportunity for public, there'll be an opportunity for public comment after.
So if we could just give a minute and let Dr. Ben answer. I mean, when you're up here speaking, I promise you, no one is going to be overspeaking you. So when you're up here, we'll give you the respect. When Dr. Ben speaks, or any other Mary Alice, or any other, Mrs. Brancato, any other board member speaks, just give them the respect because we will give you the absolute respect when you're up here speaking. Dr. Ben, continue, please.
Answering Mrs. Brancato's question, we questioned that ruling, and it was sent back to us and the CDC put in writing that it specifically mandated, that it specifically mandated that it included buses. We've got three legal opinions. And as I put on the slide, that is a mandate that is presumed valid because federal guidance and mandates are considered presumed valid until otherwise determined. But we did ask the question about that.
Okay, so that was one thing that I actually did look into. So if we could maybe check that out a little further. School buses in a school district, like ours, because we actually own those school buses, that is not public transportation. Those are owned by the school district, which is funded by the taxpayers in the community.
And Mrs.?
So, so the reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is, how many of you have been on a bus when it's 90 degrees outside?
She should not be engaging the audience. The question is to me or not, okay?
Okay, so, Mrs. Brancato? So obviously, we don't have the exact answer for that.
Madam Chair, we do. We asked those exact questions. And that's the ruling we got back.
All right.
Those are the exact questions. We went to that language, asked the question. They have responded. We've gone to three legal firms also. They have said they have the authority. Okay, the State Department says they have the authority. And at this time, they ruled that it is a mandate. Every question that Mrs. Brancato is asking are the same questions we asked to get clarity on that because we viewed it the same questions that she had.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so moving forward. Moving forward. Does any other board member have anything else? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to extend our community comments because we have additional people who want to speak. I want to extend our community comments. Additional 20 minutes would make 45 minutes. So if I can get someone to second that?
Second.
Okay, thank you. So then, next community comments, Ms. Rollball?
Could we have a vote on that, please? Oh, you want to roll call on the motion to extend community comments?
Okay, so we're going to need a roll call on that motion.
Okay. Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godickson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdick?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Motion carries 900 to extend community comments. Okay. Community comments, we're at that portion of the meeting. I'd like to read a statement. Each resident or taxpayer who has previously registered will have up to three minutes to speak. When your name is called, please approach the microphone, announce your name and address before making any comments. Board Policy 903 governs participation at board meetings. If you exceed your three minutes, your time will be terminated. Comments that are not related to an agenda item, personally directed, abusive, or obscene will result in your remarks being interrupted or your time being terminated. Disruptive or disorderly conduct by members of the public, including but not limited to speaking when others are making public comment, is not permitted and may result in the meeting being recessed or adjourned. I'm going to call on the people that have previously registered. They're in the order in which they entered our Board Doc's comment system. Jackie Hawkins. Please state your name and address. And you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jackie Hawkins. 136 St. Road, Southampton, PA 18966. Sorry. This is my first time doing this, so. As I said, my name is Jackie Hawkins. I am a mom of two kids in Davis. I am here to show support in favor of mask optional. I am a non-masker. But instead of fighting for one side of the line over another, I feel optional should definitely stay the answer. With all the bullying that both sides seem to be doing to try and get their way in person and on social media, it will get worse if you, the school board, get rid of optional to favor a no-choice answer. As a non-masker, I too have been bullied by people who favor the mask. But I also have friends who accept me as I, as I accept them with the choices that we make for our own families. I know the board is having issues with both sides attacking them for favor. One response to attack on the school board responded on social media said to teach them a lesson by muzzling their kids. Hit them where it hurts. That is a horrendous thing to say and do. Revenge is not the answer to bullying. And I hope the board would not follow such a thing. Please rise above the personal feelings of being bullied and not react to vote as a possible wrong thought. Please remember the kids are not doing the bullying to you. The kids don't deserve to be revenged upon. Please remember that these kids of the school are from both sides of the family and that we need to make the best choices for them and not our possible hurt feelings of the bullying. Keeping the optional choice for our kids is the only answer that would make both sides happy. Showing our kids that both sides can come together in an agreement will help them not only have a better school year, but hopefully nicks any bullying amongst them for the choices of their households that parents make under their own roofs. Please, I say again, I implore you to keep the masks optional for our kids and the respect to the families' choices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Stacy Hill. Next person is Stacy Hill.
You did just fine.
My name is Stacy Hill. I'm at 962 Independence Road in Warminster. The first thing I want to stress is there is a serious issue with the health and safety plan. The entire metric is based on PCR case counts. They've been proven by multiple scientific studies to be a false indicator of infection. Not only is there a plethora of scientific data to support this fact, the PCR test was recently issued a Class 1 recall by the FDA due to false positives and false negatives. The CDC is now issuing a recommendation to use a new test that can facilitate detection of differentiation of SARS-CoV-2 and influenza viruses. The second thing I want to stress is that masks are not proven to provide protection from viral transmission. I got a stack of scientific studies for you on that. Extended mask wearing can pose several potential risks. Self-contamination from touching and rebreathing of organisms that should be exhaled. Hot, moist environment increases the risk of growing bacterias that can cause strep, cancer, and pneumonia. Mask-induced exhaustion syndrome has a host of side effects, including blood carbon dioxide increases, decrease in blood oxygen, increased heart rate and blood pressure, decreased cardiopulmonary capacity, headache, dizziness, hot and clammy feelings, decreased concentration, drowsiness, skin lesions, acne. Not to mention long-term effects that include diabetes, asthma, high blood pressure, high blood sugar, cardiovascular disease. Overall, masking can have long-term effects on a variety of organisms, organ systems, and metabolic processes. I have all the data, okay? Use of masks for prevention of COVID is authorized under the EUA. The EUA means that it is experimental for this purpose, and they are authorized to use it temporarily while there's an emergency. Okay, that requires informed consent. Whenever there's an experiment, it requires informed consent. Informed consent means that they are, the FDA, the Code of Medical Ethics, and the Nuremberg Code require the subject is provided, the burdens, the risks, the benefits, and the choice to decline. Bottom line, based on the inaccuracy of the positive case counts, it is inconceivable to me that this would be the metric used to determine if kids should be masked or be physically present in school. The data is out there. It's available for anyone who wants to find it. Go look. Check the sources that they're citing. As a taxpayer and a parent, I expect a revised health and safety plan that uses an accurate baseline for its decisions. I am thoroughly disappointed that after 18 months, and with all the resources and the scientific data, this is your best plan. My child will be in school for five days. He will not be masked. The facts do not. The facts do not support masking. You are not legally authorized to strip my child of the right to inform consent. The facts do not support virtual school.
All right. No, no. Do you want us to take a recess? Because we will. Your time is up. There's somebody else coming up. Thank you for your comment. Ms. Rovall, can we call the next person, please?
Amy Cons, could you please come to the microphone?
Yeah, we have to get real close to it. It's fun. Okay, so, oh, you already started. Great, I didn't start yet. My name is Amy Cons, 885 York Road, Department 14B, Warminster, Pennsylvania. Nelson Mandela once said, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than in the way in which it treats its children." The lack of knowledge about COVID-19 over the last 18 months resulted in a mask mandate in Pennsylvania that ended in June of 2021. But it did, and it also ended here in June of 21 with your vote. Recently, Governor Wolf left it up to each school district to make decisions, and every single surrounding school district in Bucks County has voted again to vote masks as optional. We now know that the masks our children wear, if worn properly, are designed to block particles as small as 200 nanometers. The particles of COVID are 50 to 140 nanometers. In comparison, that's like trying to keep a mosquito out of your yard with a chain-linked fence. Children forced to wear masks daily are literally in despair. The U.S. has not studied or experimented with forced mask wearing on children, because that would be abuse. So I found some science-based research out of Ireland. According to the Irish Health Authority, masking children in the classroom is not a legitimate medical precaution. Masks can exacerbate anxiety, breathing difficulties, impede the development of communication and language skills, become breeding grounds for bacteria, and can affect facial development. Masks, if worn properly, only stop the spread of COVID-19 by 1%. That was reported by the CDC in March of 21 and Dr. Fauci last year before this got crazy. Out of 7,000 confirmed cases in children in Bucks County, not one has been hospitalized. But for some reason, we have to punish them to not overload hospitals. There is no benefit of forced masking of children. Healthy kids are not getting sick from COVID, and they are not transmitting COVID to others. The downsides and dangers of forced mask wearing extremely outweigh the benefits. Students and parents for optional masking are asking for a choice to risk a mostly asymptomatic infection of a virus of a questionable and malevolent origin. If parents and students choose to use the mask, they too are taking a risk with an unproven source of protection we don't really know the long-term effects of. They should not worry about the unmasked unless they're admitting masks don't protect as well as they were told. Some members of this school board are using it as a jumping-off point for their political career. My child is not your political pawn. Our children are not your political pawns. If you sincerely feel that you made a choice based upon the student's best interest at heart, but please think long and hard before making this choice. We are simply asking for a choice. Frankly, I'm disgusted by certain members of this school board and how they speak about children and parents of the community with the social media posts and emails. We all know about those, and I am not doubting comments are coming from each side, but ethically, board members should not and cannot be.
Thank you for that comment.
My name is Lauren McCray. I live on 643 Green Court, Warminster. First of all, I would like to say, kids are in the hospital because of RSV. You can look it up, WHYY.org, and you'll see RSV is sweeping the nation, combined with a nurse shortage, because they're getting fired for refusing the shot, and the hospitals are empty. I was just there last week with my son. As a teacher, as a teacher in another district, I can tell you that mask wearing is not only a big distraction, but pure theater. Kids chew on them. They pull them down all the time. They touch them. They take them off inside classrooms all ready to eat lunch and for mask breaks. How is that any different? Masks are nothing more than security blankets for traumatized adults. If masks work, why can't they be optional? If they don't, why are they mandatory? Masks are filthy. It is well documented that viruses go right through while bacterias stay. In an interview on August 9, Dr. Fauci said that making children wear face masks will hopefully not give them any lasting impact on them. Tell me, if anything negative happens to my child because I was denied the right to choose, will the school board be held liable? We are not convinced of mask wearing because the science is against them. Here's a study from the NIH that says they give marginal protection, a small effect. Small effects do not warrant mandates, especially when they do more harm to children. They harm them psychologically and physically. Especially young children need to see the faces of other people. Our kids are depressed. They need to connect with their peers. They need to be able to communicate with and interpret facial expressions. They need to develop speech and letter sounds. Mask wearing will impede their development and sends them a message of fear. It is unnatural and unnecessary, as children are not at risk from COVID. 4.2 million kids have tested positive for COVID. .008 have died. According to the CDC, 480 kids died during the 2018-19 flu season, which is more than have died from COVID in 18 months. What about the kids who have already recovered from COVID and have natural immunity? Why should those kids be subjected to masks? It's conformity and child abuse while giving adults a false sense of insecurity has nothing to do with science. Instead of bulldozing us, convince us with science, not fear. Making decisions based on trauma might feel good, but in reality, cause more harm. Why were our kids forced to wear masks outside last year? Where was the science in that? It causes anxiety in children. You have no right to harm my four children by mandating that they're masked. I am their parent. God gave that right to me, and restricting their breathing is crossing the line. My daughter cried every day last year before school about how hard it was to breathe wearing a mask all day. She begged me to stay home, and she had bad allergies and a stuffy nose. I had to. I had to keep her home. You don't have to agree with us, but you can at least acknowledge how we feel. When good people are traumatized, they are controlled through fear and try to control others. Have compassion. We are not each other's enemy. We are just asking for the rights to our children.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for speaking.
Joan Twig?
My name's Joan Twig, and I live at 429 Deblene. I come to you tonight with a very heavy heart. You ask why a heavy heart? Because I'm unsure why we are not celebrating that our children are not being affected by COVID, but instead punishing them by forcing them to wear masks. In March 2020, I was skeptical of COVID, unsure of how it would affect my family, mostly worrying about my children, of course. Then after a month, I soon realized what was really going on. Control. I was elated that it wasn't affecting kids as we might have first thought. I'm saddened and overwhelmed. It is the summer, and we are supposed to be enjoying ourselves, yet you have a scaring like hamsters on a hamster wheel going around and around for no reason at all. Why are you doing this to us? Why are you adding this non-issue to every parent in the district's plate? Do you realize that everyday parents have real struggles? Real-life ones. Financial, child disabilities, caring for elderly parents, unemployment, mental health, addiction, demanding careers, transportation challenges, special therapies, that's just to name a few. Why are you doing this when in 7,000 COVID cases in children in Bucks County, not one child was hospitalized? Children under 18 represent only 20.2% of our county. Per the 2019 numbers, there are approximately 628,000 county residents. Approximately 126,000 make up children under 18. Don't you want the kids to have a normal school? I would think after this past year and a half, everyone would want to move on, but it's not part of your political agenda. The masks make you feel safe. They don't keep the kids safe, and all of you know that. At night, I lay awake, worrying I may have to move from this district or put my daughter in a charter or private school if you move forward with required masks. This will not sit well with my 13-year-old. She loves her friends in her school, but I will not subject her to this unnecessary abuse being done by you for no reason. My family has been actively living since last May. I didn't even know any personally that got COVID until March. Definitely don't know any kids. Amazingly enough, as the science shows, they all recovered. Were they sick? Yes. Since when has it become protocol to get rid of all illness? I honestly believe no one in my family has contracted COVID because we have been out and about the whole time, not suppressing our immune system. Our immune systems are thriving on combating the germs we encounter. If other parents want to mask their children, let them. That's cool with me. I don't care. They're your kids. I don't want my kid to wear a mask. I'm their parent. I want to make that decision. Do the board members know that you work for us, and the superintendent works for you? I thought I should remind you of the hierarchy in the district. And I will leave you with one more fact. All of our surrounding Bucks County school districts have voted.
Okay, we'll move on to Christine Mathis.
Christine Mathis?
Natalie Monroe? Margie Murray?
Hi, my name is Margie Murray. I'm at 746 Bruce Road in Warminster. My grandson is six years old, and he has autism and ADHD. In the beginning of the year, he constantly pulled his mask down because he could not breathe. He was harassed and bullied by his teachers and even the bus driver, who constantly told him all day long, "Pull your mask up, pull your mask up." He didn't say anything, because he's six, you know? He's scared. So he came home crying his eyes out, saying that he can't breathe, but his teachers are forcing him. That is child abuse. That is not just my opinion, that is the law. The Pennsylvania Child Protective Services law states that one of the legal definitions of child abuse is interfering with the breathing of a child. I'll just say that again. Interfering with the breathing of the child is legally child abuse. Masks not only restrict oxygen intake, but it also causes the child to breathe in their own carbon dioxide. Plus, they are breathing in numerous pathogens that are on the mask, such as things that lead to pneumonia, meningitis, staph infections, and many other illnesses that someone else has mentioned. Masks do not stop viruses. Viruses are so microscopic that they pass through masks as easily as a mosquito passes through a chain-linked fence. You are supposed to be representing our children, but instead, you ignore the parents who don't want masks on their children. You ignore that every other school district has voted for mask optional. You ignore the fact that there is no mask mandate in the state of Pennsylvania. That ended on June 28. Recommendations are not mandates. You don't have to listen to it. Use your common sense. You ignore the fact that the PCR test is incapable of distinguishing between a flu, a cold, or COVID, which makes all of the numbers that you are using inaccurate. They are false. They are wildly inaccurate, and they are inflated, because the PCR test has actually been recalled. I don't know if you knew that. Because it counts colds and flus and even pass colds as COVID. So the COVID numbers are inflated. These are our children, and it is our job to decide what is best for their health. That's not your job. That's our job. We're only asking for the choice. We're not telling people who agree with masks that they can't do it, but we want the choice to not put masks on our children. It's like...
Thank you. Becky Miller?
Thank you for speaking.
Becky Miller?
Do we have Becky Miller here? Michael Reutman?
I had a speech planned, but these lovely ladies pretty much said all facts. So, my name is Michael Reutman. I'm from 2 Jamie's Court, Warminster, PA, 1-8974. Follow your protocols. So, my family came from Russia, and we escaped communism, and my grandparents fought against Nazis and gave us pretty much freedom. And my grandparents would be rolling their graves to what's happened in America. The freedom, it's gone. So, I came here to talk about masks and all the facts that the ladies are stating. They're all facts. So, the CDC is not a government. Nobody voted them in, and you guys are obeying them and worshiping them nonstop. And it doesn't matter what I'm going to say to you guys, because you guys have your minds convinced. So, the only way that you guys will understand is, if God forbid, something happens to my kids, because they're getting psychologically abused, I will class-action lawsuit every single one of you guys that voted for this mask, because my kids' health and their mental well-being is more important than your financial, from the, you get it from the state, you get financial income from the state. If you follow their guidelines, they might give it to you or might not. So you're abusing our kids? You guys only understand money. This is what this country is turning into. Nothing but money. Value's gone. It's all about money. The only gentleman here and one lady here that I respect is him. Everybody else, you need to think about money. That's it. That's all you think about is money, 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 okay? So, the one thing that hurts is going to be when something happens to my child. And my daughter's getting messed up every single day. I have three daughters, and they are psychologically getting messed up. They don't know how to interact with other kids. If something happens to them, well, they're not learning anything new as well. They're learning all negative things. My kids have turned so negative the last year, it's disgusting. I don't recognize my kids, because they don't have social interaction. When we grew up, imagine this was you. Don't think about our kids. Think of this was you when you went to school. Did you want to have your mouth closed and not be able to speak, see anybody's facial expression? What about the teachers? How are the teachers going to know if a child's in pain, or something's going on, or depressed? Come on, this is common sense. But the only thing you guys understand is class-action lawsuits. And I will sue this school and every single one of you that voted these mask mandates. Every single one of you.
Thank you for your comment.
Don Rober? Don Rober? Is he here? Ann Carlucci? Catherine Legge? Catherine Legge.
My name is Catherine Legge. Five forty-seven Seventh Avenue, Warminster, PA. One eight nine seven four. So I am speaking today to have masks optional. I'm not trying to take away anybody's right because they want to have their kids in masks. I get it. Fear is a big motivator. I personally do not live in that realm. I am a mother to three school-aged children. One is in tenth grade and tenant and will also be attending Tech for the first time, which by the way is mask optional. And my middle child, who is eleven, he's going into sixth grade. And when he found out that his brother would be able to be maskless in Tech, he just was like, "How can I go to Tech? I need to go to Tech." And I said, "I'm so sorry. You're in sixth grade. You can't." He started sobbing. He has been asking me since school let out, "Are we going to have to wear masks?" He's like, "It hurts my nose." My youngest daughter, who is going into first grade, I opted in kindergarten because I did not believe a kindergartner could learn to read and write virtually. I put her in St. Joseph's, St. Roberts. And because I did not trust Centennial School District to have the best interests of my children or anybody's children's at heart, I re-enrolled her. I would have loved to put her in Willedale, because I adore Willedale. But I did not trust you guys to, one, look at the real data, which the CDC and the NIH both sponsored studies to see how effective masks were before this pandemic came in. And then when it first started happening, had said they were not effective. Well, all of a sudden, they changed their tune. Couldn't be politically or monetarily motivated. No, no. It's fact now, even though they were the ones who sponsored the studies and found they were not effective, especially against upper respiratory viruses. And I know plenty about upper respiratory viruses because two out of three of my kids, my high schooler and my now middle schooler, both have medical issues. My high schooler has what's called dysautonomia. And subset is POTS, Postural Orthostatic Tachycardia Syndrome. He also has orthostatic hypotension, ADD, and kyphosis of the spine. So what masks do to him, and I have the same condition. I have dysautonomia myself. Within seconds of wearing a mask, it causes extreme overheating of our body because our autonomic nervous system is going haywire. Causes him to have panic attacks.
Your time's up. Piper Higgins.
Does she have to state her address, and she's a minor? She was wondering.
No, that's fine.
Just say your name and then you can read your speech, okay? Come again?
My full name?
You're just Piper Higgins.
Hi, I'm Piper Higgins, and I want to, I want to let I want to let you know how much masks hinder our everyday life at school. The last year was awful. Wearing masks all day hurt my ears, and they were very uncomfortable and made my face itchy. I don't understand why we have to wear them when everywhere else we go, it is not required. Also, kids are very unlikely to have problems. Getting the flu poses more of a danger than COVID, and I don't see any signs that ask for symptoms of the flu. The worst part is, is that we have to wear masks at recess, and it made me more tired because it would get really hot, and it would be, and it made me hard, it made it harder to pay attention in school. Gym class was super tough. Running with masks on and breathing in my own hot air made me feel like I would pass out. Also, wearing masks made it hard to understand the, my friends, and sometimes it was very hard to understand my teachers. Making us mask, wear masks because you are afraid is unfair and unnecessary. We should be able to talk with our parents and make the decision that is best for us. I just want to thank you for ruining that what should have been my best-grade school year. I hope you make the first year in middle school a good one with masks being optional. Thank you.
Stacy Patterson.
Hi, my name is Stacy Patterson. Five zero eight Acorn Drive, Warminster. It's really hard to follow that little girl because I could feel it. My kids have suffered so much this year. But I do need to address certain things. So as stated in the email from Dr. Anthony Fauci, he stated back in February of 2020, "Masks are for infected people, and a typical mask you find in the drugstore is not really effective. Masks make it hard for children to interact with peers, for younger children to learn expressions, and to pronounce words correctly. Seeing someone's face is essential." I just want to know also, there is a question at the end of this. Your safety plan. We would like to know which doctor wrote the plan? So if there's no mask mandate, will you deny my children the right to an education because you expect them to use a medical apparatus when they are not even sick? This is the definition of Munchausen's by proxy. Masks should be a recommend, they are a recommendation. They are not a mandate. I, sometimes I think about my son, my son who was in second grade last year. He would talk about the playground and how there were boxes they had to play in, and his friend was two boxes over, and he was yelled at for even wanting to say hi to him. I actually called the superintendent and said that was mean. Completely mean that these people were harassing a second grader. The other thing was, he said he was harassed by teachers constantly telling him to take his or put his mask back up. Sorry if the poor kid couldn't breathe. I also, watching your safety plan, I refuse to allow you to segregate between vaccinated and unvaccinated children. It's not going to happen. Okay. We were told by you, Dr. Bedden and the board in June of this year that the emergency relief funds will be withheld if schools do not comply with the recommendations. That information is false. Either you blatantly lie to us, or you don't know the facts. Do not threaten us. I have a recording of this by senators. Social distancing is a joke. Parties, sports events, concerts, car shows have occurred throughout the year, so a small classroom is never going to be the problem. We all know the transmissibility to and from children is very low, almost undetectable. I have seen children chew on their masks, fill masks up with mulch, put them around their feet, and covered in the remnants of their food from the day. It is disgusting. Also, to restrict a child's breathing is child abuse. End of story. Somebody also mentioned that. The CDC, we heard this as well. CDC has come forward. Their PCR test is faulty and cannot distinguish between COVID and the flu. Most of us with common sense knew this. The new test will not be ready until December 2021. It is unethical to use a faulty test to base decisions. And my last point. This is in regard to one of the board members who is not here. Is by far the most unethical board member.
Your time's up. Your time's up. Please be seated.
That was three minutes.
Your time is up.
Three minutes, just like everyone else. I know. Every person had three minutes.
Community comments is over. Community comments is over. Please sit down.
Thank you.
Community comments is limited to those people that requested time, that followed the procedure. The community comments portion is over. As board secretary excuse me, could we have quiet?
Point of order, I would like to make a motion that we engage that's our duty to listen to the people. If they came and didn't know the rules, I'm willing to sit here and listen to them if anybody else at the board is also. That's my motion.
We'd need a motion to suspend board rules, and we'd need a vote on that?
Just made that motion.
All right. Could you restate the motion clearly so that I could get it accurately?
My motion evidently is we suspend the board rules, and we will stay and listen to the public as long as they want to talk to us this evening.
Ms. Eilenberg.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Eight zero.
So can we have, can we have the lady that wasn't finished talking come back up and talk? Because I honestly didn't hear what she was saying.
No, it's still three minutes. Moving forward, it's still going to be three minutes. Or anybody who wasn't able to sign up that wanted to speak? Right, if something, we voted to let people, we voted to let people speak who didn't get a chance to go online and sign up. It's still going to be three minutes. No, it's going to be three minutes. I'm sorry, go ahead. Just your name and your address?
Yes, my name is my name is Daniel Alexa. I live on two fifty-five Estelle Lane, Warminster. One eight nine seven four. I would like to address first, these fine folks here, just kind of drawing a distinction to think about. You know, we, we live lives where we have God at the center, family at the center, our country at the center, and this is what we occupy ourselves with. And it's only when those things are disrupted, our family, our core values, that we need to rise up and we show up in a manner like this with the enthusiasm that we do. And I fear that there's a serious divide from this side and some of those on that side, where God is not at the center. In fact, their religion is the level of control that they exact on our children. There are board members on here that do not have children in this district, that do not have children in general. What possible reason would you have, with the exception of exerting your control and your vision on our children? And that's the distinction I want you to think about. That there is a difference between law and legislation. My dad told me this story, and I love it. Law is when you're in a parking lot and you see, and you put your blinker on, you're about to pull into that spot. Law says if a car is coming, that's your spot. That's the law, right? It's unwritten, right? There's no statute in the, in the Pennsylvania books or in Bucks County, but that's the law. Everyone knows that's your parking spot. The stuff that comes out of boards and Doylestown and Harrisburg and Washington DC, to hell with it. It doesn't matter. It's just legislation. It's man-made. Write whatever you like in your books. Write that masks are mandated. Write that vaccines are mandated. I don't give a damn. Because you're just legislation. You mean zero. You are nothing. My kid will go to school with no mask. I want to see, what are you prepared to do? What are you prepared to do? There is one question to ask. There's one question to ask, is what are you prepared to do? Ace people, what are you prepared to do when all of us send our kids to school with no mask? I want to know what you're prepared to do. You're going to lift them up out of the seat? You're going to walk them out? I want to see it. Because it's coming. We're just around the corner. Thank you, my friend. Just ask yourself, what are you prepared to do? Okay? I spent half the time sitting here looking at private educations. Then I said, "You know what? I know what I'm prepared to do. I'm sending my school, my, my kid to this school with no mask, and I want to know what you're now prepared to do." Well, we'll wait and see, and I, I trust that most of these parents here will join me along with many others. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you for speaking.
So moving forward, we have oh, I'm sorry. Who wanted to speak? Sure.
My name is Braden Hill. Nine six two Independence Road, Warminster, PA. One eight nine seven four. I went to school a total of four days last year, and those four days I wore a mask. Honestly, the worst four days I've been in school my entire life. I've not gone back to Centennial since those four days, the first four days where you opened up the school and then immediately closed it afterward. I decided that it wasn't worth going back to school, that being online and almost failing half my classes was much better than being in an environment where I felt suffocated and couldn't breathe and was uncomfortable. I couldn't talk to my friends. I sat in lunch staring forward, not turning around. If I turned around, I got yelled at. It was not something that I wanted to be in or be a part of. So I stayed home. I sat in front of my computer by myself in my room and did my schoolwork there. It's not something enjoyable. It's not something fun, but it was better than being in that building that was more like a prison. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for speaking, and, and I'm sorry. I'm sorry you felt that. Well, listen, most of you know me.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Just your name and your address, please?
My name is Michael. My name is Michael Negavon. I'm at one zero zero nine Mueller Road in Warminster. One eight nine seven four. I don't have any skin in this game. I don't have any kids in the school. I do pay taxes, and I am concerned about what's going on in our schools for our kids. And you know what? What's going on in our schools is a similar view of what's going on in this country. We have too many people who sit in seats like yours, who don't listen to we the people. Now, I'd be willing to throw down a paycheck and say that all of these fine people out here who have made comments, the words have gone in one side and right out the other. And I'm, I'm, I'm absolutely amazed that the majority of the people who have spoken are asking for options rather than mandates. I haven't heard anybody come up here and say mandates are great, CDC is the almighty, and Fauci is our new god. It hasn't happened. So like I said, no skin in the game, no kids, taxes, and I'm really concerned about what's going on in this country. And the school district is a view of what's going on in this country. So be clear. I will do everything in my power to support anybody out here who is willing to listen to we the people and act. I will support each and every one of you appropriately if you listen to we the people and act. Give these parents options. Give them freedom. Let their kids learn in the right environment, free from pressure, frustration, and problems. Let our kids grow up to be healthy, productive, American citizens. God bless America.
Thank you for speaking.
Just your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Berry, thirteen thirty-six Cloverly Road. I wasn't prepared to speak today, but
You got this.
After really nervous here. After watching my kids lay around last year. Sorry, I'm like really nervous. Sleeping, waking my kids up in between classes, watching them, fighting with them. Surprisingly, I'm sure some people, like Dr. Bedden knows me well. I have very well-adjusted children, but only because I chose to give them back their lives. And I think it's extremely important that you teach your kids that fear is not the option. And we don't judge people that want to, you know, have their kids wear masks, but I think it's important that they don't judge us for teaching our kids that fear is not how we're going to live. And I And I, I don't feel that people should, you know, on the school board should be able to tell us how we should raise our children. And, you know, I want to give my children the best opportunities. That's why we live here. I don't, I came from northeast Philly. I moved here to give them a better opportunity, and I wanted them to have good schools. So, you know, it makes me upset that we're going through this again. I wanted them to have a, a normal school year. And, you know, my plan is to send my kids without masks. Unfortunately, they're not like me. They might not want to, you know, disrupt things, but I'm going to do my best to teach them to be like me, uh, you know. Um, I'm a Karen. No offense to Karens here. But lastly, I, I do want to make a note that there is, um, someone on the school board who, you know, I have to bring this up, but John Panofsky has been on social media.
I think those remarks are out of line.
I'm sorry, I, I'd need to bring this up only because...
You want to discuss the masks, that's absolutely fine.
I thought we were allowed to...
That's absolutely fine. You can discuss the masks all day long. However, we're not going to bring in another board member and slander anybody.
Okay.
That's not going to happen.
I'm not, I, I'm... I'm not saying anything negative about him. I, I just wanted to...
And, and, oh, that's absolutely fine. If you want to discuss the masks, that's fine.
Oh, I'm so sorry. No, he won't do that. Will never happen. Well, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking, Bonnie. You did, you did just fine.
My name is Heather Slawinski. I live on nine sixty Gladwin Road in Wormminster, Pennsylvania. I had six children go through Centennial School District. There was a time where I looked back at Centennial School District and I was proud. I was proud of how you treated our kids. Our kids were happy. Do you see these kids, do you hear these parents and what they're dealing with? With their kids going home crying because of the decisions that you are making? I don't know if any of you up there can see my shirt, but I'm a proud mother of a United States infantry Marine who fought, who fights for me, for every one of us, for the freedom of choice, for the freedom for these kids to breathe, and I really suggest you take that into consideration when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slawinski. She does have awesome kids.
This is Matthew Hill. I live at nine six two Independence Road in Wormminster. Had no intention of talking, I just intended to support. I'm not going to hit you with all kinds of data and all kinds of things. I'm just going to tell you real world experience. I've worked through this entire pandemic. I have been around people the entire time without a mask. I have not gotten sick. We do have masks optional at one point, and most of the people that did wear masks, not all, but most of them did get sick. And the reason, what I observed, is they're futzing with their masks, they're playing with their masks, they're touching their faces, they're not washing their hands. I've observed a lot of you up here doing the exact same thing. Several of you haven't touched them, but a lot of you have. So that's where a lot of this transmission comes from, touch. I have a boss who wipes his nose and then hands you something. He puts his mask back on. So can you tell me how the mask is solving something like that? Now, for the parents, if you would like to do a class action lawsuit if they don't vote the right way, there's going to be a notebook, and please put your email address and contact information.
Thank you for speaking, sir.
My name is Rob Price, ten sixty-nine Gorson Drive, Wormminster. So I'm, I'm definitely for the optional for the masks. Um, I have two boys, one's eleven, one's nine. My five, my, uh, one who just finished fifth grade, you know, that, that should have been a really exciting year for him, and half the year is missed, and then on top of that with the mask. My youngest is visually impaired. Walks with a cane. Now try and, try and imagine working all day in school, blind with a mask on, trying to brail. Just try that. You're frustrated when you're hot, right? So imagine trying to, trying to have an everyday life, trying to brail, walk around a hallway with a cane, and not being able to breathe. I picked him up last year, the last day of school, and he got off the bus crying, "Daddy, I can't breathe." I said, "If you can't breathe, you pull the mask off." This, this has to stop. That has to be an option. If you don't feel safe, wear a mask. If you do feel safe, don't wear a mask. It should be up to us. And I thought the whole thing with the vaccine, if you're vaccinated, no masks. Now all of a sudden that changed? Are you serious? Don't forget, we are we the people. All right? Vote, vote for optional for masks. And Mary Alice helped my son out plenty, plenty, plenty of times. Mary Alice, thank you.
Thank you for speaking, Mr. Price.
Okay.
Your kid, you're, we're supposed to be here to help your little kids, so I'm glad I could help. He's a good kid.
Hi, my name's Ashley Huckle. I live at six seventy-eight Woodyard Drive, and I have an incoming kindergartner. This is my first experience with this, and unfortunately, I'm also an ICU nurse. There was a point in time where I was so scared of COVID. I don't think anybody here wants COVID, nobody wants to contract it, nobody wants to give it. But I'm more scared that my five-year-old, who just tested out of speech in the IU, is going to have a huge setback. She's not going to make friends, she's not going to learn to read, she's not going to learn to speak all of her letter sounds. And I'm just really disappointed. I'm disappointed that this is where we are right now. Um, if you want to send your kid to school with a mask, I'm all for it. Nobody should take that right from you. But unfortunately, I think it should be my decision whether my children wear a mask or not. Not yours. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for speaking, and, and thank you for being a nurse.
Thank you. All right, so, moving forward, um, the approval of the agenda, can I go to Mrs. Eilenberg?
Thank you. Approval of agenda, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, two point one approves the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Committee of the Full Agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law? Could we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any needs? Abstentions? Seeing none. Approved.
New business, Mrs. Eilenberg?
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull anything?
Uh, yes, three point one and three point two.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Okay, so let's, let's read them and then vote on them separately, please?
Okay. Three point one, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, three point one approves the ARP-ESR Health and Safety Plan for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year as per the attached. May I have a, any discussion?
We need a second.
Need a second first.
Oh, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, can you guys hear me still?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Bettin, was there any consideration given to having a plan like Pensbury? Pensbury's proposed plan is masks required for K through five, I believe, and then optional six through twelve, which is basically the cutoff line for the vaccination. Did we look into doing that as well?
There was discussion and there was feedback regarding dividing households that way as not very attractive offer or consideration. And currently, as I just mentioned, too, that the recommendation, including our Bucks County Health Department, is for, for all schools, given our current status. But there was a discussion and it was shared that that would be probably divisive in the household, and I think one person spoke to that situation about having one child one way and another, in another condition within our school district.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, just, just for clarification, when we do get to vote on this, this motion, this item as it appears would be that masks would be required for the children attending school next week. Is that accurate? Or would they be optional before we get to the actual voting on the item when it comes up?
That's, that's accurate. The Health and Safety Plan, that would, that would mandate, that would not, that would make masks required.
Tied to Mr.?
Thank you, Madam.
Mr. Martin, she is correct. Uh, there is a chart that delineates, delineates when that happens. So based on the level of, uh, transmission determines the level. But as it stands now, because we've been moved up to high transmission, it would be. But the plan has variations based on the conditions that we are under.
Mrs. Crossen, can we? Mrs. Crossen, can we, can we do a roll call vote so that everybody?
Absolutely, that's what we're going to do.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Roebuck, can you, um, do the roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Eilenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, I need to be able to hear the vote, please. Mr. Miller, you're next in the rotation. Mr. Miller, are you able to vote?
Mr. Miller, it's your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky? I need quiet, please. Mr. Panofsky?
Yes.
Mr. Burdenick?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Absolutely not.
I'm going to ask again for quiet, please. Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
Let's take a recess. Motion to take a recess?
Motion.
Let's go.
Let's go.
Second.
Okay.
Moving forward, the approval of the agenda. Can I go to Mrs. Islandberg?
Thank you. Approval of agenda, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 3.2...
Madam Chair, we do not have the entire board back yet.
Approves the resolution regarding protecting CSD staff and others' targeted mitigation and prevention strategies to reduce the spread of COVID-19, and in particular, the Delta variant, in the workplace as per the attached.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just to put it in plain English, this resolution would require and mandate that all of our employees get vaccinations?
No, it does not. It does not mandate anything with vaccination. It mandates that they provide us with their current status of vaccination.
I thought it says for workers to get vaccinated or to get tested.
Ms. Robach, can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
No.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Miller, I need to be able to hear the vote, please. Mr. Miller, you're next in the rotation. Mr. Miller, are you able to vote?
Mr. Miller, it's your vote.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
I need quiet, please. Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato.
Absolutely not.
I'm going to ask again for quiet, please.
We want asked, and asked optional.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 3.
Let's take a recess. Motion to take a recess?
Motion. Let's go.
Second.
Moving forward, the approval of the agenda. Can I go to Mrs. Islandberg?
Thank you. Approval of agenda, be it resolved at the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 3.2...
Madam Chair, we do not have the entire board back yet.
Approves the resolution regarding protecting CSD staff and others' targeted mitigation and prevention strategies to reduce the spread of COVID-19, and in particular, the Delta variant, in the workplace as per the attached.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Just to put it in plain English, this resolution would require and mandate that all of our employees get vaccinations?
No, it does not. It does not mandate anything with vaccination. It mandates that they provide us with their current status of vaccination.
I thought it says for workers to get vaccinated or to get tested.
Ms. Robach, can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Islandberg.
Yes.
Mr. Goddickson.
No.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Panofsky.
Yes.
Mr. Bergnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato.
I don't even know what we're voting on.
We're voting on the resolution to regarding protecting CSD staff.
3.2.
3.2. Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen.
Yes.
Motion carries 6 to 3.
And then new business? Moving on to the rest of new business. Be it resolved, you want me to just read them through?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. 3.3, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the Emergency Instructional Time Template, Section 5, 20.1, for the 2021-2022 school year as per the attached. 3.4, approves the Personnel Agenda, including retirements, resignations, authorization to employ leaves of absence, change of status, co-curricular additions and deletions, grade level chair, and mentors as per the attached. 3.5, approves retroactively the hourly rate increase for support staff from 0.39% to 1.0% effective July 1, 2021 as per the attached. 3.6, approves the Auxiliary Pay Sheet for the 2021-2022 school year as per the attached. 3.7, approves the Release and Waiver Agreement for Student 3-10 as per the attached. 3.8, approves Addendum 3 to the Confidential Release and Settlement Agreement for Student 10.26 as per the attached. Can I get a second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 9-0. Education, Pupil Services Committee, Mr. Goddickson.
I didn't know that there was a choice. Again, I'm not here. You know that I don't talk about them recently.
Excuse me, everybody, just please, let's continue the meeting.
So we can take another recess, or we can finish the meeting? Education and Pupil Services Committee, Mr. Goddickson.
Thank you so much, but I do have a question that was interrupted before in regards to our first vote, and that is in regards to what happens to students that's coming to school without a mask? Will they need and require to have a 504 plan in order to attend school without a mask?
Students who have and qualify for masking exceptions would go through the process to get a masking exception with the information that was provided on the slide on that section. We do expect to comply with the Health and Safety Plan. Our first course of action is to try to provide a student who comes without one to have one. And then the schools go through progressive process with any other student code of conduct process.
Okay. Moving forward, Mr. Goddickson.
Thank you, all right, thank you. We do not have any presentations for education from the Educational Committee. We do have a number of items for approval. Does anybody want to pull any of the items? Hearing none. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District approves 4.2A, approves the renewal of the contract with Humana's for the 21-22 school year. 4.2B approves the 21-22 standard contract for services with the springtime school for Student 9-10. 4.2C approves the denial of attendance exception request for Student 1-22 to attend Willardale Elementary School for the 21-22 school year. The student resides in the McDonald Elementary Attendance Zone. 4.2D approves the denial of the attendance exception request for Student 10-19 to attend Willardale Elementary for the 21-22 school year. The student resides in the McDonald Elementary Attendance Zone. 4.2E approves the attendance exception request for Student 1-19 to attend McDonald Elementary for the 21-22 school year. The student resides in the Willardale Elementary Attendance Zone. The parent will provide transportation. 4.2F approves the attendance exception request for Student 1-19 and 5-19 to remain at the Willardale Elementary School for the 21-22 school year. Parents will provide transportation. 1-19 are two different students in E and F. 4.2G approves the exception to Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident student, and Policy 206, assignment within the district to allow Student 10-11 to complete senior year 21-22 at William Tenet High School without payment or tuition. Parents will provide transportation. 4.2H approves the exception to Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students, and Policy 206, assignment within the district to allow Students 10-3 and 23-3 to complete their senior year 21-22 at William Tenet High School without payment or tuition. Parents will provide transportation. 4.2H approves the exception to Policy 202, eligibility of non-resident students, and Policy 206, assignment within the district to allow Students 10-3 and 23-3 to complete their senior year 21-22 at William Tenet High School without payment or tuition. Parents will provide transportation. 4.2I approves the Klingon Middle School TSI Title I School Plan for the 21-22 school year. 4.2J approves the McDonald Elementary School TSI Title I School Plan for the 21-22 school year. The next meeting of the Committee of the Whole will be held on Tuesday, September 28, 2021. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second to adjourn.
End the meeting.